Good morning. Thank you for joining us at the April County Council Meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheriff Gatton.
Morning, Mark Gatton. What can I share today? I came over today to talk just quickly about the annual jail reports that I'm required to do under the statute. I'm not going to hit on everything. I just want to hit on some of the highlights. The total number of people booked into Whitley County Jail last year was 1,374. The number one offense was drug-related offenses, which is kind of shocking when you divide that and think it's like 67.75 people per month get booked in on that and operating while intoxicated, 56.16 people getting in and out. So there's the top 10 on page one. County jail averages 3.76 inmates booked in a day and 3.71.
Mark, can I ask you to hold on for a minute? I don't think everyone got their copy of this.
That was sent later in an email.
In an email, okay, so we don't have printed copies. Thank you. You guys want to take a look at this?
Do you want to make copies?
No, don't waste the paper.
I looked it over at home.
I've looked at it. I still haven't.
The average daily inmate population for inmates housed at the jail for 2021 was 131. 2020, we only averaged 103, but that was due to COVID. It's going all with the courts, minor offenses being cited in the courts that are brought to jail. The highest population housed at the jail happened on five separate dates in 2021 of 152 inmates. The lowest population or the highest population for both the jail and work release in 2021 was 198. Like I stated yesterday, Paula hasn't recovered completely from COVID. Just didn't fill that whole building back up with participants yet, so she's trying, but a lot of the people are not qualifying. The lowest population for inmates housed at the jail was 93. As we all know, that was short-lived. It doesn't ever stay down below 100 very often. And then the average stay in days for male is 52 days total in 2021, down from 63 in 2020. Felony stay went down from 121 to 112, and misdemeanor stay went down from 22 days to 18 days. Jail incident, the confinement staff wrote 1,433 jail incident reports throughout the year. Some of the things that were up in the statistics there were chemical agent deployment. We had zero in 18 through 20. We had four last year. Taser deployment, we had three. We used the restraint chair 25 times. Empty hand techniques were used 63 times, and verbal direction towards inmates was used 339 times. The confinement staff did 776 unannounced cell walk-throughs looking for contrabands. Jail escapes, we had two, which were walkaways or failure to return. Oh, were they both failure to returns? Failure to returns last year from work release, but they count towards the report. Jail staffing, we're still a little bit down, but that's not due to, we're not up to the numbers they want, but that's not due to not having enough slots. It's due to the fact that we can't fill. We've done interviews lately. We interviewed five that were good. We offered some jobs, and once we told them what shift they were on, they declined the job. So we're down, currently down one position that we need to fill yet at the jail. And I listed in this year's report about the commissioners buying the property and that we're moving forward with the new jail, so maybe that will relieve some of their thoughts when they come in July for the annual inspection. Then there's some things going on at the sheriff's department I'd like you guys to know about. We were just awarded a body camera grant. They're going to grant us 15,200. Our portion is $3,800 to match it. That'll be a camera for every officer. Right now, we're doing the finalization on what the monthly cost is going to be for storage in the cloud and what our charges are going to cost, whether we're going to go in-car charges for the download or down in the squad room. We're getting ready to release onto the road a new transport van. Years ago, whenever the sheriff would come in, every two to three years, the sheriff would want, needed an additional appropriation for money for another vehicle. I've been fortunate enough with the commissary account to buy, this will be the sixth vehicle we've bought out of that, so I've never had to ask for that additional fourth vehicle every year, every two to three years. And the last thing going on is all the computers are out of warning, expired in our cars, and we're having some breakdown. I'm looking to purchase all-new in-car laptops, but I'll be honest, they've doubled in price since five years ago. I do have the funds and commissary for that, so I won't be asking for any money there either. Any questions?
You said something there a while ago about some of them didn't qualify for Paula. Is it because of their?
It could be because of their charges, or Paula helped me pass chances at work release, and they messed up.
They failed to, in some level, to be based supervision in the past or recently. That doesn't disqualify them from the entire sentence, but normally would want them to sit for a period of time.
Okay.
And then bring them out afterwards, but really, a lot of preparation to do this in more comprehensive assessment for their transfer from the jail, so we're more prepared.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's certain charges that disqualify them.
You can't do that. Okay, all right. Thank you.
In the recent ruling from the Allen County Court, has the Sheriff's Association offered any suggestions on how to combat that ruling?
No, they have not. I have not seen one yet. And something Commissioner Banks, you hit on yesterday, after you asked me about the claim for a dog, that was for the partition inside the vehicle. That's what that one for us, because the other stuff will be paid out of the canine fund, so that was out of the car building equipment there.
Got it. It just stood out, something that we don't normally purchase, so that's why I had asked about that.
Yeah, which I just wanted to clarify, that was for the dog kennel inside the vehicle and not at the home, which will be paid out of the other fund.
Sure.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Commissioners, additional appropriation requests.
So what we're asking for, we had talked about this already once before, but we're asking for an additional appropriation of a million from the lit correctional rehab facilities. This would be, I'm still going to pay these invoices from Elevatus as they come in. So we'd just like to have that money appropriated. Do you want to handle them both? Do you want me to go through those?
Let's do them individually. Do we have a motion for this appropriation, then we can discuss it?
I would like to know, you said a million dollars before I'd make a motion. I'd like to know what they total, please.
Yeah, so the first invoice that we received from Elevatus, I believe, I have here. I actually don't have it with me, but the reason that we're asking for a million is because our contract with Elevatus is not to exceed a million, so we're asking that it just be appropriated, so as the bills come in, we can pay it. I want to say that our first bill was 250,000, and they're going to be like maybe four incremental bills.
The first invoice is 37.
On the back of the.
On the back of our sheets.
I think it's, that'd be design modification. I think that's where, a million, I guess that's where.
Yeah, okay, so that's where I was getting the four bills, the contract amount, that first column, the contract amount at the end totals a million, so it looks like they've just billed 37.5 for design modification up to this point, but it looks like they can go up to 150,000 on design modification. So it just made sense to us to just appropriate all the funds at once, so that we can not come back every time and ask for the appropriations when they send the bills.
Thoughts?
Make a motion. We approve the appropriation resolution ordinance for the 1 million dollars.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do have one question. For payments for the actual construction, those will be periodic, and do you plan to bring that at one time?
Well, that's a great question. I don't know that we have a plan yet, because we're so early in the process, and we don't even know who's going to build it yet, or any of that, or how that billing will happen, so I guess we'll tackle that when it comes.
We just think it.
That has to be bonded, because that's where the payment comes from, right, June? So until.
Yeah, until we go through that process, and I would assume that you're going to keep a running total on these and keep us informed as you disperse, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That would be the only thing that I would add, please, is that on our monthly meetings that we get an updated report on all the monies that have been expended from that million dollars.
Sure.
Anything else? All in favor of the additional appropriation, please raise your right hand and show that it is unanimous. You have a second?
I do, yeah. So the second one is one that we've also previously discussed, and what we're requesting is $350,000 to be allocated from the ARPA funds, and the reason for these expenses is we've already approved those handheld radios for the sheriff's department. That was $257,000. $13,000 would be Baker Tilly for work related to the county comprehensive plan. $13,060 is work related to the ARPA funds, and then $5,833 for services rendered from county's comprehensive plan. So a total of, so far, a total of 289,931. So, and we don't anticipate more invoices right now from Baker Tilly, but, you know, just if this 350,000 will cover all of that.
She sent me an updated one for 500,000.
Oh, okay. Did something else come through?
She said that upon discussions that just in case it was needed, was the last thing that I.
Okay, I'm indifferent with which one we go with. I just want to make sure we can pay the bills.
I advertised for 500, so you can approve the 500 if you choose, but that was the last document.
Yeah, I have no problem coming back and asking for more if we just want to approve the 350 instead of the 500. I'm not aware of any other bills that came in, and I have no problem coming back to ask for more.
Well, if we're at 289, and you don't have any other bills or costs right now, why the 350?
Wouldn't it just make sense in case something else is coming in, like unless you guys want me to keep coming back, which is totally fine. We can either allocate that much, we can go right down to the penny and allocate what will cover the bills, or I don't care. It's, I'm indifferent to it.
Did you say part of that was the HTs for the sheriff's department?
Yeah, so.
I thought.
It looks like the total for the HTs was 257,000.
Okay.
I agree with that, but I just, I want to make sure that's what I heard.
Yeah, so there's three different bills in here to be paid from our Baker Tilly.
Yeah, it appears that there are three bills from Baker Tilly and one bill for Motorola for the handhelds. The trouble that we have though is that sometimes the bills come in and we don't, like, the bills are due, but we have to wait for a council meeting. So I know it's nice to have just that little bit of a cushion for bills that come in, but again, I'm indifferent. Like, the bill can sit and wait until a council meeting. That's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the 350,000.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
So what is the ARP grant fund? What, is that, that's all grant money we're going to use? Is that what?
That's that 6 million that was awarded to the.
The American Rescue Plan.
Plan, the COVID. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for 350,000, as originally requested. There's no further discussion. I'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand and let it show that it was unanimous. Thank you, Chad, or agenda calls for me to come back later.
Sure.
Next is the Chair Busco Library Board Appointment. See no representative from the library.
I would make a motion, a motion to accept the nomination from Rachel Hyman, who is the Director of the Chair Busco Library, of Stacey Keener, to be appointed for a four-year term, with her term expiring in April of 2026.
I have a motion. Do we have a second? No further discussion. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand and let it show it's unanimous. Thank you. 2022 Salary Ordinance Amendments. These amendments are in regard to changes in the structured highway department, and also.
The account number for the sheriff's department, now that they fixed their.
Yeah, we had to change the account number, because it's not a sergeant.
Right, change the title to.
Captain. Do I have a motion to accept the amended salary ordinance?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and let it show that it is unanimous. Chad Nix would come forward regarding the regional sewer district. If there's no objection, that's fine. Scott Wagner.
We need it from this. There's two, Tim. Come first. Do you want me to strike one and print my name on it?
Morning.
Good morning.
It's an out-of-e-mail, kind of a memorandum. During our move, we discovered about six of our old surplus that we're required to keep in proper safety rebound. The closest rebounding facility is Mount Manchester. We've used them over the last 30 years to do various books. A little short with some of the funds. We're expecting that large of a bill from them for 30, around 33,000, $3,300. This is a grant, the 1206, that we'll be using that money from. We just want to get permission to go ahead and write it in the red for one month, write the check now, because they have the books in their presence, get that done, and then come back in May for the actual operation from. They're actually just moving money from the grant proper that has a bunch of surplus in it over to the budgeted grant for the year, so.
And that was not advertised, so we cannot do it.
Right, too late. Again, with accepting the bill, it's too late at that time to get on to April's schedule, so again, it's just money we already have in a grant. It just needs appropriate for this year's budget. We're actually asking for money for anything.
So this is informational and during.
Well, just to know if I could get permission to go ahead, write the check now would be $200 in the red for one month until May's, and we could actually do the transfer over.
From grant money?
Yeah, it's grant.
Do I need that in a motion that? I make a motion that he can write the check and be in the red for 30 days.
Motion.
$200. Any further discussion?
All in favor, raise your right hand and let it show that it was unanimous.
Any questions?
You're done with shots here, correct?
We're still giving shots.
Are you?
COVID. CDC announced four booster. We have not gotten a lot of the emissions state yet. It's just the same as the third booster, as far as we know, and so we still have clinics in April from, on Thursday mornings, from 9:00 to 11:00. We'll be doing that through April. We haven't asked for May or June yet, and we also, are we doing four-month-old to, six-month-old to four-year-old, want that shots as well. But we are down to an average of one or less than one person per day in all of March, so.
And just Thursday morning now?
It's Thursday morning. It's open. Now, you can call, schedule something, but Thursday morning.
Thank you.
Tiffany, let me know. I skipped an item regarding the election stipend.
And that you guys did already approve to go in a year-by-year, with FIDI, but we did get ahold of State Department of Accounts, and they said there were two options, either pay through payroll, that way the taxes are taken out, or if Jess would like to go and create an LLC or something, that way we could create her a 1099. She does not want to do that, so they're just wanting permission to be able to pay that through payroll. Because I know last time we were unsure of where it was going to be paid from, so.
Do I have a motion to pay the election stipend to Jessica through her regular payroll? I move that we pay the election stipend through a regular payroll. Second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and let it show that it was unanimous. Personnel committee recommendations. Personnel.
Okay, we'll start. The first one I have, or what the personnel committee did, was Jennifer, our HR Director, came up with part-time pay. We've stayed with WISK on all our salaries and money, excuse me, to stay with what they say. The only thing we haven't committed to was going with WISK part-time pay recommendations, and the personnel committee thinks it's time that if we're going to stay with WISK on everything, we need to go with part-time pay for part-time employees too, so, which we're all over the board right now, correct? Every department has their own part-time pay scale, and WISK has it all out in black and white, and then it'll all be the same.
This is a suggestion for a policy change. Current policy, we have a range, and what we're suggesting is that the hourly rate for a COMAT 1, 2, 3 be the same, whether you're full-time or part-time. It's equal work, equal pay. But if you're part-time, obviously there are no benefits, but the hour rate would be the same as full and part-time. Or at least part-time, because there are occasions when you have to offer a higher hourly rate to get a part-time person, because part-time is not desirable for a lot of people. And this is just a recommendation at this point. No request for a vote.
So I think she said for 2023 budget.
Yes, so we'd like to make a decision about a policy change or to remain the same before 2023 budget.
I think that's something that really needs to be put into that budget cycle discussion, because there's going to be some other things that making that decision affects. When we set that salary ordinance for part-time work and individuals, then that gives, it always had traditionally in the past, given the department head, that ability to stay within that parameter and give them a maximum. So if we raise this to accommodate what the maximum maximum might be, then that also opens up the window, the way it's currently set up, for anyone to use that same window, and I think that we need to really sit down and, and vet that, look through that, and maybe come up with a new way of applying different part-time salary ranges to different positions and categories overall. So that's going to be a process.
So a process, the COMAT would be a range, COMAT 1, 2, 3, the various.
Is that how WISK has got it now, or we're gonna, it's going to be set at one, one hourly wage? Do you remember?
They had their recommendation of the set dollar amount.
Yeah.
For each one, so.
So, and there will.
We can hire in it minimum wage all the way to 2248. They're saying 2150 should.
So there will not be a range if we adopt this?
That's more of a gen question. I.
Okay, well, I didn't think there was going to be a range if we did this. Is that correct, Tim?
That's not what we were suggesting, but I agree with Thor that this needs a process of discussion, because there are positive reasons on both sides of how to pay part-time for the county and for the employees. So this is informational at this point in time, so you can be thinking about it, coming up with suggestions. Anything else, Tom?
Did we hear back from the Circuit Court when we sent that to WISK on?
No.
Not yet, okay.
No.
Do we need to do the new, the new position request? Because we didn't have to send that in, correct?
Right, but council still needs to.
Okay, so Personnel Committee, two departments came to us, and they want to take two part-time to make one full-time, which would be the Auditor and Treasurers Office, and now the girl person, I should say, person will be kind of like cross-trained and be able to run both departments or know how they function. Is that correct? Okay.
The duties of both offices, yes.
So like I said, we're going to take two part-time to go one full-time. The salary will be comment four. Is that right?
Yes, because.
Yeah, part-time, okay. The only extra cost we'll have is when they go full-time will be their benefits, but we're going to have one person to be able to flip-flop from one department to the next. And I, the Personnel Committee thought that was a good idea, so we gave it a favorable path.
I have a question, Tom. Is that the new hire, is it, they're going to keep the part-time they got now, and you're hiring another person?
You're sorry? No, no, no.
Okay.
The Auditor's Office lost a part-time person.
They're not going to fill the part-time spots.
No, we are not.
I get that in writing?
It should be full-time, though.
Right.
Right.
And I have worked out schedules, tax time, which tax bills go out this Friday.
We also thought that this would be a good first step in the cross-training process between offices. This was discussed earlier that would be valuable and this will be an example to the rest of our departments on how to try to work this out so that people could slip from office to office as needed on an emergency basis.
Is this person going to be repacted?
No.
No, both of the part-time positions were factored the same. So Jen didn't feel it was necessary to send it back to us because they both were the same.
The benefits are not an insignificant amount of money, but personnel felt like additional cost was worth it in the cross-training and eliminating two part-time positions.
We'd like to revert that back to yesterday on a start date?
The start date, the third.
The third. The third.
Do you want to make a motion, Tom?
I make a motion that we accept the new full-time position to take care of two part-time for the Auditor and Treasurers Office.
For the second. We have a second. Further discussion?
This be a change in sound?
Yes.
Would you like the motion to include that this replaces part-time and there will not be additional part-time?
Yeah.
Hire at this time? Does anybody want that added or do you feel it's necessary?
Councilman Wheeler.
Okay, we, let's add it. Councilman Wheeler brought it up, so let's put it in writing so we know. Yeah.
And do I have a second to approval of the amendment by the second?
Yes.
Since it was your idea.
Can't resist it now, can you? You're in a spot.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, you know, this is, this is a trial basis. Hey, you talked to me a couple of times about this. The thing that we do have to be careful is, and Kim's right, that that all of a sudden we don't start having part-time again because of the cost of the benefit package. So, so I, we talked about cross-training and everything and so hopefully this works and can cover two offices. I'm okay.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and let it show what's unanimously supported. And we will amend the salary ordinance next month. Commissioners, would you like to walk us through or discuss the resolution that has been requested from Ice Miller?
Yes.
If you'd like, we can circle back. Chad now has his team here.
That's totally fine. We can, we can do this. So this resolution is really simple, just one page double space, but basically it just states that there was a petition from constituency that recognized a need for a jail. And there were fifty-eight signatures and the auditor did verify, verify those signatures. And then at the end, it was just stated that the council recognizes that there's going to be a holding company for bonding and the leasing of the building. So it's just essentially like a pledge that council supports this moving forward and that they recognize that the petitions were signed.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh five. And this was prepared by Baker Tilly. Ice Miller.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two oh five.
A motion, a motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand and let it show it was unanimous. Chad.
Thank you for moving us to the back of the agenda and even bringing behind the operation. My name's Chad Nix. I'm the President of Water Sewer District for the county. We're making some good progress finally. I got the bids are out or should be opening up bids here next week, so we're excited about that. I got with me today though Steve Pention, who's part of JPR, our engineering firm that we've hired to keep us in line in making this work out for all the residents as well as, you know, the county environmental impact problems that we have right now. So we're coming to council to give you information, have you asked questions, so on. But we also went to the commissioners meeting, it's been a month ago, a few months ago, requesting some ARP funds. We're coming up with some very creative ways or JPR is coming up with some very creative ways to get the lowest cost possible to the resident. And our, our initial dollar amounts were showing a sewer bill of, you know, in the hundred, hundred-plus range, which obviously is very expensive for the homeowner. And the trustees did not feel comfortable with passing a, a bill on to the homeowners of that significance. JPR, with the help of the state revolving fund, it came up with some very unique ways where we can possibly get that down to a sixty-dollar bill, which would be significant difference. And so that's why we're here. We've requested half a million dollars from the commissioners to make the project debt-free after it's all of a sudden done. The, the purpose of making it debt-free are the only way we can get that sixty-dollar bill is if we are debt-free. If we have debts, we're going to have to retain those customers and that bill will be significantly higher. We want to, are we, our time is like I said, next Tuesday, we open up bids. We plan on going to the commissioners meeting, asking for a favorable pass to the council on the ARP funds. Steve can explain some more on the financial side of things on how this is all going to work. If you have some questions.
So, okay, so you want to be debt-free, then you only want to charge sixty dollars a month. What down the a few years down the road, if there's repairs or add-ons or whatever, what, what will that do to their monthly rate?
Well, just like the utility, as expenses increase, operational costs increase, there would be rate increases throughout the year or throughout the years.
Okay.
Project fund, so it'll never be static.
Okay.
If, I'll step back just a little bit. In working with the district, we initially planned a project that included Stable Acres, Dunphy, Colesse and County Line South and Chair Bustle. That was around an eleven million dollar project. But as Chair Bustle was working through some of their own improvements, they weren't quite ready for us to connect to them yet. So we went back to the state and said, because they granted this, the state fund granted us five million dollars in grant money. Okay. And they said the rest we can get in low interest flow. But that still led to rates being at a pretty significant level. We then looked at dropping out Chair Bustle, which brought us down to about a five-point-five million dollar project. And the state said, hey, you, we'll still give you the entire five million dollar grant for a smaller reduced project. So with a, with about a five and a half million dollar project, that's still left five hundred thousand that we have financed somewhere along. And that's kind of a purpose coming to ARP and State Revolving Fund program really encourages districts like this to approach the county councils and county commissioners of the county to see if there would be some additional funding sources available through the ARP program. So the goal to do the debt-free is that these collection systems would actually that in a certain period of time be turned over to the treatment providers who are providing the treatment for the waste farm. So in this case, Stable Acres, County Line South and Dunphy would be tied to the Aqua Indiana system. And Colesse would be tied to the Columbia City system because Columbia City already has sewers out there to the Colesse area. So the, the benefit for the district is, the district's not really, their main focus isn't to be have a bunch of staff and operate systems. It's just to get subject eliminations and get subject systems eliminated at the lowest cost possible. The advantage for those treatment writers is they're getting some assets, you know, worth millions of dollars and customers for future revenue. And the district's role in all this was just helping get the money and getting it, you know, approved and at the lowest cost possible to the customer because you have to take out a loan of five hundred thousand or so. That's going to bump rates up and these utilities aren't interested in taking on debt. You know, what they're interested in is, is getting assets and customers. And we feel that after going through all the different scenarios, that's the lowest cost option. If bids come in where we hope they will, and you know, in this, in this day and age, we hear prices are going up on materials, et cetera, but if they come in within our budget, our, our hope is that we can turn these systems over to those utilities, not immediately. There'd be a certain amount of time involved and that's being negotiated right now with those Columbia City and Aqua Indiana. But we will know the exact number that we need April twelfth. That's when the bid to do. And then the, the district has been doing a call meeting on April nineteenth where we'll make.
I have two questions. First one is, how do the good people of Chair Bustle feel about being left out of this project?
They won't be left out.
It's not left out. It's.
Phase two base. Based.
And they are clear on that?
Correct.
And where's the money going to come from the second phase?
We're gonna. Yeah, we would again approach the state revolving fund for additional funding for the Chair Bustle base project, which would be another roughly five and a half million dollars.
So that's possible, then. This isn't a one-time?
No, no, this is different. And, you know, there's projects beyond Chair Bustle as well that the district is, has identified as should be moving forward.
And then my second question is, you've asked for a certain amount today, but you've not opened bids yet. How do you know what that amount's going to be?
I don't know that. But we're coming to kind of set the table for, for that. We, I think in our initial application, we were asking for half a million to a million. You know, we're, we're certainly open to coming back after next week and saying, okay, here's where the real bids are. Here's our actual numbers that we need.
We have to close on the loan though by June thirtieth. So that's why we're starting this process now and make sure you guys understand.
The state's funding rules, while they're flexible on a lot of things, closing on this grant funding that was ordered to, it has to be done by June thirtieth. So we have to have all that lots of money lined up before we can close.
Is there a timeline for the Chair Bustle?
Yeah, the, the thought is that that would come in the next funding cycle for the state revolving fund, which they'll make their funding commitments this July. We're already in line. They know that we're asking for money for that project as well. So we'll know probably in August on the funding.
My first question, and feel free to correct me, but the other sewer districts that have been established in the county have bonded for their, they've carried a debt to finish off their projects. Why should this project be different than TriLakes or further out west and the end of the TriLakes project, the third phase out there, there's that, those people are still paying for their bond. Why should this project be treated differently?
Well, again, we were charged with helping to find the solution that will keep the lowest monthly rate, user rate to the customer. And this is one option to do that.
I, I have a tendency to think that there's so many more customers available in the TriLakes area, which helps repay that bond, which keeps the rate down. Here with the number of people that you have, you don't have that, no?
We, you are correct. We have, we have only hundred and forty customers.
Yeah, so there's not near as many payers on it, so it raises the monthly rate and.
Honestly, the, the maintenance costs were a huge factor and that's why we did this creative deal with Aqua and in the city, Columbia City, because again, you're going to put a rate that's normally sixty dollars to a hundred and twenty, just because there's so few customers. You're right. Economy of scale is a big deal. For sure.
Second question then is, are we essentially then using state and ARP money to create assets that will then be given to private entities in the case of Aqua and in Columbia City?
Correct. Aqua is paying us still in negotiations right now. Certain dollar amount per hookup. To be used though for seed money for future projects like Chair Bustle. We have big issues in Lloyd. We have big issues in Colomer. And there's, it definitely needs to continue on, right? The district, even with these two major projects, is not going to be able to lay down and take a nap. But all that would be used then for seed money in the future.
In all hundred and forty-three, they have no choice but to hook on.
There's very few exceptions. There are a couple. Scott would help me out on the exemptions that are allowed, but.
So a couple of things, I think what they're trying to say is, of like TriLakes, they don't really want to get away from having a full-time office location, staff and maintenance crew that they have to employ to repair and fix things like TriLakes does. TriLakes has around six, seven thousand people. So that's why, you know, it's almost less, the bills are going to be higher, but they're going to afford that office space to now maintenance crew. So that's kind of what that issue is. Secondly, yes. So when we first started the project, the commissioners, it was about eighteen to twenty-two locations for the county, including older subdivisions and our small little towns that we have throughout the county that we address that's having these sewer issues. The ones you're seeing today are the ones that we've tackled initially because they're some of the most severe ones that we have. The reason why Bustle is a buddy is because Bustle can't accept the sewage rate right now because of their limitations to their sewer capacity at the plant. But they have, are currently getting money to build that bigger so that they can have capacity. So that kind of gives them a little more breathing time to do that, to accept that amount of customers from around two hundred some. Right, like it'd be a huge increase for them. They're afraid that they cannot handle that. Bustle taking some of their own sewer infiltration problems with sewer water right now. So they're preparing to be able to accept that. That's why it's a little bit late for Bustle for them. Definitely Bustle is one of the most severe cases for environmental issues, so they are definitely on the work with them. As far as exemptions, we have a little bit of a plan. The women and ladies out of the State Department, there is the State House deciding all their wisdom to change the rules on us right now. As of July first, instead of having very set exact exemption limitations, it's, they've opened it up to everybody. So, so somebody that has a forty-year-old system, that we have no idea how they've maintained it, have no idea how to put down their drains, we don't know if they add-on to a random pileup to the back ditch, we don't know any of that. They want me to go out there and approve that, give them an exemption. Whereas before it was, the system had to be ten years or newer. They had to have a certain amount of land with it and you had to have certain other qualities established. That's all gone out the window. So yesterday we had a discussion at the commissioners along, next week we talked with Matt about setting some parameters of what will be acceptable to the sewer board as an exemption because it just opened up fingers box on the exemptions. We don't want to, you know, the reason why the sewer is coming out there. We don't want to, you know, the reason why the sewer is coming out there is to eliminate that septic issue. The reason why those areas are being influenced is, one, there's not enough land. So you look at Sheriff Busco South and West, Colesy, that's probably the room of those lots to put. They can have a septic repair and state could be put for your well, which is required, or your neighbor's well. But secondly, as in St. Livers, the sewers just not good for it. Maybe you look at the 1972 plumbing report, it said, these sewers are terrible. We should be so much as there. It didn't even show it. So there's a, also the reasons why sewers are going out here, that's to help these people with this. Plus, it helps eliminate issues for building on, adding on your houses, to wind up, open now for people to expand their properties. Any questions on that?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
So if I'm hearing you right, down the road, you're going to come in front of us and ask for more help, aren't you?
Well, I don't know. I don't know how the sewer district will grow. So, you know, we're looking at, at not coming off of the, you know, expansion up to Tri-Lakes Sewer, grabbing some of these other places for Seaver, and it's likely collaborations again, or we might be able to help finance that connection to the existing service provider like we're doing here.
Well, I just meant Scott, that you're, for them asking you to go out to approve everything, you're going to come in here and you're going to ask for help because you're not going to be able to do it all.
Well, that's the thing, the thing that is, I mean, states, since they've taken away those qualifications, because somebody coming up, hey, I'd like to get accepted. I'm like, oh, what's your septic? Oh, we don't have a septic system up from, from now on file. Okay, well, you can't at all. Or your system's 20 years old. Oh, you can't at all. Sorry. I can limit those. I'll put the phone call. But now, it's possibly, I might have to go out to all these places, you know. It will be a lot of work. It really will. And the state has really jinxed everybody in the whole state by doing this. It's a real problem.
Then I have a question for the commissioner down here. Chad, what this request from the ARP, is that going to interfere with anything as far as the jail or anything else you got going on?
That's a great question. So we're starting to understand ARP a little better now. And one of the things that we can do with ARP is just call the whole thing, revenue loss, and roll that back into our budget. But we can't spend that on new construction, or we can't spend it on other projects. It has to be used as though any of our other sources of revenue would be used. Like, Jim, help me out. I'm not saying that right, but it can't, it can't be used for new construction. It can't be used for major projects because that's not what we would typically use.
Normal yearly activities, but not new construction.
So if you put it back into the county general, then the money in the county general that would have been used for those other things, then we use for that. And then you, and then, so it's just a lot of one pocket and the other one, really?
Right. That's right. So it's a great question that I can't really answer. I don't know what the impact would be. And the commissioners have not yet decided on whether or not we're going to move forward with, with the regional sewer districts' requests. So I can't, I can't speak for the board of commissioners on that, is we don't, we don't, I, I intend to bring that to our next meeting and then come back to council with the direction we'd like to go in on whether or not we're going to help regional sewer district and hopefully come with a dollar amount at that time.
Sure. Our question, we learned, um, just a question. I think what we need is that and, and commissioners to talk about didn't see or setting some standards on what they want to set, what they want. Because facing this, the health department has to look at these things, but let's say that the sewer board has to accept that. Sewer board is ultimately authority on accepting exemptions or not. But I don't decide that. I just do the investigation. So if the sewer board would agree to us to say, okay, we're not going to accept this, we're not going to do this, then that will really help out we going out. Except you just say, we're not going to do this because they're not going to accept this. So that, that's something we keep it around. And so I would hope not, that we'd have to increase this. Back when, 1998, when we ran sewers over to Moon Lake and Old Moon and all that, and we didn't have to hire more people for me to inspect the septic tank abandonments. I've still found looking at all the septic tank abandonments on these projects as well without any increase.
And if I could just add too, hopefully the health department won't be coming to ask for more, for more manpower as this happens, because I think we don't want that liability to do these inspections. And it most likely would go to a third party.
I'll make a motion that we delay making a decision on this until, number one, the commissioners have had a chance to vet it and come up with a number. And number two, that we have a solid number on what we're really asking.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Further discussion or questions? I have another question. I'd like to go back up to Tri-Lakes and Sheriff Busco. Do you know what rate payers are paying in our other districts in the county?
Yeah.
And I know it varies depending on the bond issue.
Correct. Yeah. Tri-Lakes has three different ordinances. I think the lowest though is like $32, which I know that very first phase though was a lot of grant money as well from, from state revolving funds.
And, and what's the highest in Sheriff Busco? Where did that district?
I don't know. Sheriff Busco, I believe their, their flat rate for customers outside corporate limits is in the mid-60s. Columbia City's 60, 80 for flat rate.
So all, except for the, like you said, those initial projects up in Tri-Lakes, those are crazy low, probably for the whole state.
The one on Moon Lake, I can tell you is a little higher.
Yeah.
Because we was the third on that run around there that caught my business out there where I had to hook up to it. So.
The average, that's regional sewer district cost is a hundred dollars. This would be well below that.
We, we as the sewer district really just don't want to be, for people in charge of shut offs, we don't want to be in charge of maintenance. We don't want to do filling. We just want to get rid of septic systems. And this money would make that happen. Without this money, we'll, we'll have to take on those duties.
Would this per district consider the individual rate being whatever the highest rate is in any, in the county and matching that so that there are less funds needed from ARP? Like, if it's 75 or 78 dollars?
Those rates are going to be based off of whoever's going to be, are treating the sewage.
Okay.
So we will not set a rate ordinance. We won't do anything. We're, we're just telling them to run it.
Yeah, the, the whole key on that is being able to turn this over in this debt-free state. If we have to take on debt, then we'll probably have to take on certain operations and billing and customer service and those types of things.
I'm assuming the homeowner have a tap-in fee?
Correct. There's no, no actual connection charge planned, but the homeowners will have costs. For instance, a typical grinder, in this scenario, the homeowner is going to own the grinder station. And then they'll pay, you know, they'll, they'll have to connect their electrical to it, to 30 amp, 34 volt single-phase circuit. They have to pump their septic tank, flush it and backfill it, and then connect the sewer line from their house to the grinder station. Those are all costs that the homeowners will incur as part of this project.
And if we're close enough, we'll have two going into one?
Not in the scenario where we're ready to go debt-free. Every homeowner has their own grinder station. That way, because each homeowner is responsible for their own grinder station. So a shared grinder station will work out well.
And we also tried to mesh the engineering to whoever was going to be maintaining it. So Aqua Indiana has one grinder pump for every home. And so they would, they requested that we design it that way as well. It also comes with the neighborhood when somebody flushes a diaper down there.
The one, the one treating it, they'll be in charge of the maintenance on the grinders, not the homeowner?
No, in this scenario, this follows Aqua's plan, and it would follow Columbia City's plan is the homeowner takes care of the grinder station.
So that would be their responsibility for breakdowns or repairs or new or anything like that?
But the type of grinder station we're proposing is supported here locally. Aqua Indiana is also starting up a, their own service center for that specific brand and model. So there will be resources available for customers.
We have a motion and a second to delay any response until we know actual cost and get a recommendation from the commissioners. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen, for your information.
Just request them to be on the agenda for maybe. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's time for the commissioners' report.
So along with the resolution that you all approved earlier, there's also an ordinance that you should have received. The ordinance is for introduction only. We're not asking for approval of that ordinance. We're just wanting to make you aware that at our next meeting, at your May 4th meeting, we'll be asking for approval of the ordinance. And the ordinance is simply just pledging the, the general revenues for the, for the jail project. So we just wanted to make you aware of that, that there will be a request next month.
And so it essentially says that if in fact the lit doesn't pay for it, the county is responsible for the bond payments out of general fund.
Yeah, I don't know that it goes that far. Just, it just states that you're pledging the, the funds that we're taking in for the jail. So just wanted to highlight that. And then also, not to steal Jumpsunder, I think he's going to talk about this later, but we met with Baker Tilly to go over the draft comprehensive financial plan. There'll be also, your May 4th meeting could be a long meeting, but it's a lot of great information. I think Jim's going to hit on it, but just wanted to let you know that we didn't have that meeting. And that's something to certainly look forward to for your next meeting. And the only other thing that I had that I was going to bring up today is, you've probably all heard by now about the so-called First Amendment audit that the county had by some people from Michigan who walked around with cell phones and recorded people while they were working. It was an interesting thing. We're very respectful of people's rights and, and their right to exercise that, but we're also first and foremost concerned with the health, safety, and well-being of our employees as well. And so we were able to, first, we were really proud of the way that everyone handled the situation. And I'm not sure how anyone could have handled it any better, but we did recognize from that situation that we needed to have training on First Amendment and what, what people's First Amendment rights are, but also what are our rights. And so we were really proud. Amy Biggs and Sheriff Gatton pulled together two sessions of training. And it looked to me that over 100 people attended, which was really, really great. And those were hour-long sessions. And if you weren't able to attend, Jennifer Schenaberry also summarized everything and sent that out in a county-wide email. But it was just really great training. And I thought I would let you know that that was something that we did. And that's all I have for you.
They, they did visit the bank too.
Yeah.
So they were in some other businesses.
So Jim, before we go forward, do you want to tell us about this meeting?
Well, well, first, before I did, Chad, did you want to say anything about the timetable? That there is going to be some things coming up in the next?
I, I can. I don't have that in front of me right now, but I might be able to pull up on an email. But if you have it, yeah.
Just going to hand it around to you.
So this was something that I emailed to all of council probably about a month ago. So I think everyone has this. But this is a timetable that was put together by Ice Miller, who again is our bond counsel. And they've just kind of set out a timeline of things that, steps that need to be hit along the way. And I think we're, we're pretty well right on track with everything. Today, we did the, the resolution, and we introduced the ordinance. And then, of course, at the April meeting, we'll adopt the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the May meeting, we'll adopt that ordinance. The rest, a lot of these things are just going to happen behind the scenes. You know, a lot of them's like public notices and advertising the paper and that sort of thing.
Commissioner meetings.
Yeah, yeah. So there, there are steps that the commissioners are going, going to take as well. But everyone has it. But just for general awareness, you know, there's a lot of things going on.
A lot of moving parts.
Right.
Jim, would you like to give us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because we've asked Baker Tilly to come in at our next meeting to, to present this. It's a five-year study from 2019 to 2024 on the trending of our budget. It, it was extremely, I thought, extremely good session, showing how we're trending on, on income, how we're trending on expenses, where some of the points that they're concerned about with our expenses and our income. And of course, one of the things was if we spend all our money in our budget, where we would be at is how they looked at it. And, and we normally do not, and so forth. So this will probably take 45 minutes. I'm guessing it took about that before. I do have, did you pick any of these drafts up?
I have mine.
Okay. Would you make sure that it'd be good if council had it? You know, or, it, it's good, but, and we think that, that this would be something, and you can determine that after our session with Baker Tilly, that now that they have this, this template in, it'd be easy for them to update this every year. And we can follow it much closer. But it, it was pretty eye-opening, I thought. Very interesting. We're in a decent cash reserve right now. Again, if we spend all our money as we budgeted, we're going to see a pretty good drop, significant drop in that. And out two or three years, if we would continue, then our cash reserves would, would be pretty well depleted. So it's a, it's an interesting dra- draft that they did. And next meeting, we plan to have them on.
Just to add on to that, this was really good information that I wish I had had five years ago. And it wasn't done since 2013. Is that what they said? It's been a long time. And so like Jim said, they can simply maintain it now for a lot less cost. But if we let it go and we don't do one for seven or 10 years, it's going to cost a bunch of money to get, to get it going again. So it just makes sense to maintain it at this point.
No, it shows Scott's Health Department, you're, you're double budgeted for expenses because of COVID. It shows what the, one of, one of the biggest things was the payroll increases a couple of years ago, what, what it has done to money needed for the budget and that. So it's, it's, I, I thought it was a very good report.
So it creates a planning tool for us each year so that we can have adequate reserves and make. Okay, we look forward to that. And on that note, Sheriff Gatton will not be coming in the May meeting regarding his pension requests. I've asked him to delay until June because of Baker Tilly being here.
And the nice thing is, this is out before we start budget. So, so Department heads can see this and everything. So that's what's nice about this report too.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
So move.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. Any additions, corrections, other changes? See none. All in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Thank you. Councilman Barrett? Councilman Barrett?
With the sewer district in Sherbusco South, I'm gonna have to be very cautious about that because of conflict of interest, because it involves my residents. So there may be some votes in both the way of staying.
Anything else, Councilman O'Brady?
Thank you.
Councilman Warner?
The only other thing I had was, on our personnel committee, we were gonna just discuss a little bit about a wage and salary analysis.
Yes, we have talked about the wisdom of having WIS do a salary analysis every three years, so that we don't get into the position where we were before. And that, we would ultimately need to approve funds if we chose to do this between $9,000 and $10,240 approximately. So that's informational at this point.
Yeah, because we implemented this in 19, correct, when we changed all the wages and got all caught up, and now this is 22, and just so we make sure we know where we need to be and where, where, where we are at. So like Tim said, something to think about, but.
Yeah, the timeline for this is completion in October, so it would not be available for the 2023 budget. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Councilman Hodges?
I have nothing else, thank you.
And I have nothing else. Mr. Greenbasinger, anything? Anything else from those who are in attendance to the meeting? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.